The meeting will come to order. Please stand with me and join the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Okay, Donna, can we do a roll call, please?
John Lott.
My side.
Corey Dish.
Here.
Rebecca, are you there?
David.
Here.
I have Rebecca.
Kathy Henry.
Here.
Larry Jameson.
Here.
Daniel Parker.
Here.
Jerry O'Callaghan.
Here.
For everyone's disclosure, we've got two board members that are participating remotely. They're watching the live feed and they're on the phone here. And if they have comments, it'll, I'll play that or I'll put that in the microphone here. And if anyone has a question for them from the public or board members, we'll coordinate that way. So Donna's gonna now ask if they're here.
Rebecca Allison.
Here.
Brian Clark.
Okay. Can we all please read our mission statement together? To unconditionally encourage our students to be successful throughout their career. Okay. We're gonna start with our building project presentation. My understanding is gonna be...
Yeah, um, I have, um, geez. Scott from Site Logix here. Uh, we're gonna pull down the big screen so everybody can see it. The board got the first look at it last night at our building committee meeting. But I would ask the board to come out and take another look at it to see if this is the direction that they agree on.
Can everybody hear me without a microphone? Because my wife tells me if I hit a microphone, I sing and I'm terrible, so I don't wanna...
You have any mic out there?
All right. I start singing, you have to join in.
Nate, he's the microphone.
Okay. Okay, first off, I'd like to thank Richard for his help. IT is not one of my specialties and I appreciate him being here tonight. Um, again, thank you very much to the, to the board, to the administration and staff. And, uh, Clay and Limestone here, thank you for coming out. My name is Scott Palmquist, I'm with Site Logic. Um, I am out of our Oak Lawn office in Allegheny County. Uh, Site Logic, uh, we've done probably two hundred, two hundred and fifty projects for school districts uh, across the state. Uh, we are a construction management company. We also do ESCO projects, which are energy savings projects for school districts. Uh, we come in, we, we work with school districts, um, understanding that they are at this point wanting to get to another point and the process in between is usually very cloudy and our expertise helps guide the district through that process and being able to look at, uh, delivery methods to, to help present options to the school district to accomplish your goals. And I can tell you, uh, based on the meeting we had last night and other meetings we've had, um, you should be very proud of the, how engaged the district is on trying to prevent, to provide, I should say, a good learning center for the students. That was a lot of goals that came out on this whole thing and I want to commend you for that. Not a lot of districts get caught up in that and I want to thank you for that. I think you are right on target where you want to be. I'm a resident here, but I would be, I would be proud to say that I'm impressed with your direction of where you're going with this. So hats off to you. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through this, this presentation. I'm gonna move to about thirty thousand feet on this thing, trying to keep it quick. Try to get it done in about fifteen, twenty minutes at most. Uh, and then we'll be able to, you know, answer questions that I need in regard to school district asks or the audience asks. Okay, the agenda that we have right now, as you can see up on here, is wanting to talk about the project approach, wanting to look at, uh, the, the budget, the, the grants, the, the program schedule and then open up to the question. That's kinda what our goal was, looking at this thing when we presented. If you look very quickly, we, we wanna be able to focus on what the needs were. The needs were to be looking at the elementary school and being able to provide upgrades in the systems that's gonna make a better learning center for the students. And I'm gonna, we're gonna talk about this as I go through here. We're talking about, you know, um, better air quality in for the students. Being able to look at ways in which to have secure vestibules. So you can be able to have a secure area for people trying to get in your buildings. Those are very important in today's world. Unfortunately, we have to deal with these issues. And the goal is to be able to have, uh, these types of system in place to provide a safe place for the students to be able to come and learn. So what we wanna look at is the, the upgrades at the elementary school. We wanna look at being able to provide window upgrades. So we're addressing the needs, uh, with, with, uh, new windows. We're looking at the, the entrance improvements. And we're looking at being able to take the outer area of the building and being able to enhance that. Being able to provide a, a newer look, uh, to the building. And while we're doing this, we're also keeping in mind that we don't have access to your jet. We're not trying to come in here and create a Taj Mahal. Taj Mahal, we wanna be able to do everything with being able to provide the goal, satisfy the goal, but also be cost effective in being able to do it. So trying to balance that teeter totter on all the projects we have. Understanding what your financial goals, goals are and still being able to try to get where you're trying to get to with the project. So if you look at HVAC upgrades, we're talking about going with a DOAT system. Now, the DOAT system is, is a designated air quality system to be able to bring fresh air into the building and being able to cool it. So is it, is it an actual air conditioning? No, but we're able to bring in outside air into the building and be able to run it through a cooling system to be able to give you a cooler air system, also being able to, uh, de, dehumidify and, and take the moisture out of the air, being able to provide a better air quality for the students. And that, when you take the moisture out, you're also trying to drop the air temperature for the, uh, inside areas. And also, one of the, one of the things we were looking at and the goal was to be, be able to capture the needs of the gymnasium in the, in the elementary school. Being able to look at that and how, what were ideas we come up with. Now, please understand that there, there's gonna be two areas of this. This project is divided into two different areas. And I, and I'll explain to you why. It's because we wanna use different delivery systems to be able to capture that goal. And I'll explain why. The one area, we have rock solid numbers on. And we're able to give a guaranteed budget to the school district on that area. The other part, the scope is still not a hundred percent diva, designed. It is still being able to be tweaked with the district, with the administration, with the board and with input of the users. So when we talk about things in the gym, we're talking about, um, we're talking about concepts that are there. When you look at it, I don't want you to be able to count seats and say, that's exactly the number of seats. They're gonna be there. They, this is a concept that we're looking at and these are estimates based on that. So can this, can that part of it be tweaked? Absolutely. All right? Here's some ideas in regard to the gymnasium. Being able to, uh, have approximately about seventy-three hundred square feet. Being able to have toilet areas, new toilet areas for it. Being able to have a storage area, uh, the gym, it actually increases the gym area to where it could be able to be utilized by not only elementary students, but it could also be a competitive gym if needed, if you decided to use it that way. Also, as I said, being able to provide a secure vestibule. Being able to take the entrance in and out of the building. So whenever the students come in, you're able to have an area where visitors are trying to come in. You're able to, a lot of people refer to this as mousetraps. You would enter the building, you can't go any further, you can't get back out until you are processed or you are going through a secure system to make sure that you are somebody they want to allow into the building. It's part of the security system a lot of school districts are going to. That is something also we looked at and that was one of the goals that the administration and the board had had. And this is some ideas here in regard to the, uh, secure vestibule in the elementary area. Being able to pick up, you know, different additional areas for office space and still being able to provide a secure entrance. In the area they're talking about possibly could be used for additional administrative office, different offices. Again, those are concepts at this point. And this is a overall conceptual project plan that we could look at. This concept would provide additional parking spaces out there, which is always the situation with, you know, a lot of school districts and understanding districts in the, in the same boat. And that is when, you know, loading kids often on the buses, a lot of times you get backed up. Trying to be able to provide, take that all into consideration and try to ease that pain. Now, we're proposing two different types of delivery method here. The first one is called a GESA, GSEA. It's Guaranteed Energy Savings Program. The reason we like that program is because it, the other option is to go the traditional lowest responsible bidder. When you are in the school district and you're using public funds, you have to publicly bid things. You have to go the lowest responsible bidder. Sometimes you hit a home run and you get a really good contractor and they do an outstanding job. Sometimes you get a contractor that is not as strong and you could end up with some nightmares on the project. We've seen it. The GESA, uh, hybrid project, the GESA end of it, the items that fit in to the GESA qualification allows you to pull from a preferred vendor list. This is not people that we have up our sleeve, that we have a financial interest in. It is a list of contractors that we know are good and reliable. And we also would work with the district. And if you have contractors that you believe should be on that list and you wanna do work with, we wanna be able to pull them into this, uh, process also. And what we're able to do is we're able to pull numbers from there, guaranteed numbers from them. And the key thing on this thing, if you don't know anything about construction, one of the dirty words in construction is change orders. Well, under the GESA end of it, by law, there's no change orders unless the district would change the scope. So if you decide you wanted to change something, obviously that's gonna change the scope of the project. Then that would be allowed to be adjustment in the price of it. But if you, if you're rock solid on your scope of work and we go out and get those numbers, guess what, folks? You're protected. And if you've ever been involved in a project and you have a contractor that, um, is not a good contractor and they're worried about just making the money and doing everything they can, they can change order to death. But there are things that unfortunately we would have to do through a publicly bid process on this. So as I said, we're talking about a GESA type delivery system and we're talking about a publicly bid process on this, bid system on this. And there's two different ways we wanna go here. On the GESA end of it, we can guarantee those numbers right now unless the district changes the scope of work. On the other end of it, as I said, the scope is not a hundred percent defined. So these are estimates at this point. They're strong estimates because that's one of the things we do. We are also estimators. And we come from this from a construction standpoint, not from a design standpoint. We have designers, we have an architect that we brought on the team to do a lot of the design work that we showed and shared upon. So when you look at the two different types of options here, the first one, I'm gonna talk about, and again, I'm not gonna go through each one of these line items, is the GESA end of it. So you're looking at items such as windows, LED lighting, HVAC systems and controls, switchgear. Why, why would we need to upgrade and replace that? To be able to handle all the work, the, the electrical load on this. That's why those things can, would, would be on this list to do. Also, looking at the secure entranceway, the reconfiguration. We're talking about just under a six million dollar project that end of it. That number can be rock solid. All right? When you're looking at the publicly bid portion of it, these items, as I said, these are, these are strong estimates at this point. But once the scope is defined, we would be able to put together bid specifications, go out to bid and make sure that the drawings provide clarity to the bidders. Is a, when a bidder's gonna, contractor's gonna bid on this, one of the things they want is documents that are clear, decisive, that they can understand and know what they're bidding on. And why is that important to them? Because they understand it and it's less risk to them. And look, folks, everybody's hearing about the supply chain, inflation, everything else. Look, we know it's real. My wife and I went to a Cracker Barrel yesterday and I looked at the bill, thirteen dollars for French toast. It's great French toast, but man, when you're paying thirteen bucks just for French toast, you know, we, we, it's here. It's here and it's live and it's in front of us and guess what? What's gas prices? Four, almost four bucks a gallon in this area, right? So we know it's real and unfortunately, we gotta live with this. It affects these projects. All right? We have, we have inflationary figures included in this that we feel that will help the district being able to go out and secure the monies to do, to do the project. And I give you credit for being able to, last night, you met with a, a, an investment banker, I believe, after we left and looked at your financial office. I give, I give you credit for going after. So if you're looking at the total project, being able to cover the scope that we, that I outlined briefly here tonight and we went into great detail with the district last night. As it stands right now, this project is about almost ten, ten million dollars, ten point two million dollars to do that. So if you look at it and you think, okay, what is the district getting for ten point two million? Well, that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money, there's no doubt about it. I don't care if you're a wealthy district or the poorest district in the state. You know, uh, the school board are stewards of your money and they need to spend it the right way. And I believe that they have really looked at this and tried to do the best they can with it. And they are trying to provide, and I think this gets you to that goal, is provide a very good learning center for the students. All right? And I think that's what you need. I mean, you're in competition with cyber, you're in competition with private schools and all that. And you need to be able to have a good learning center that kids are gonna wanna come to and wanna learn into. So it provides good air quality, better lighting. It gives a, a new facelift to the outside of the building. It provides not just a, a, uh, a, a new gymnasium to them and an addition on that, but it also, that gymnasium can be used for a lot of different things. It can be used not only for the elementary, it can also be used for the secondary if the district would decide to do that. So being able to provide those types of things to your, to the students, you know, you look at it and you think, well, when I walk into this building, what am I gonna see different? You are gonna be able to see new windows, new outer skin on the building, which are also gonna have better air quality. We're looking at lowering the humidity in there, better high, high oxygen levels in there. Those all come into play when you're trying to provide a good learning center for the students. One of the things that we do and we do very well, we have an office in Harrisburg, right near the Capitol. We do have some people that work for us that help us be able to work with school districts and get grant monies. Uh, Garrett, last night, you know, told you guys, in the last couple of years, we are three for four on being able to help district get grants. We would work with the district on being able to compile that. We would help you submit that grant. We would use any horsepower we possibly could to help the district be successful with that. One of the districts that you may be familiar with closest, I was thinking about this last night as I was driving back and I, I live outside the Greensburg area, I'm not all that far away, have hunting property in Goheenville, just north of, uh, New Bethlehem. But driving home last night, I was thinking, you know, Armstrong School District, when they built the new high school up on top of that hill, beautiful, beautiful building. We were able to work with the state senator in that area at the time and help them secure about eight hundred thousand dollars in online mobile funding for that entranceway from four twenty-two back to the high school. All right? So, you know, one of the things I've always learned in business, I wanna surround myself with people that are smarter than me, that are gonna help me look really, really good. And that's what we do for school districts. We wanna hit a home run with you. All right? I can't go out and get business if I'm walking around with black eyes because we have terrible projects. All right? We don't do that. Uh, there, the guys that presented last night, Mike, um, Garrett, myself and Rick, we're all, we all have financial interest in the company. So it's our name on the line too. We all take pride in it. All right? We want this job, we wanna do a good, good job for you, we wanna become part of your family with it. We're not looking at one and done and get out the door. We're looking at being able to come in here, hold your hand, help you get to where you want to. And guess what? If a neighboring district wants to do a project, I wanna proudly bring them over here, introduce them to you, step back and let you tell our story. All right? That's how you grow and that's how you develop pride in what your business is. And that's what we wanna be able to do here with you. You know, we're not, we don't go after every school district that we try to be selective on the projects. We go after, this thing was right in our sweet spot and I think we can really help you hit a home run and get this thing where you wanna get to. The grants are one of the things that we do. In addition to that, Mike, Mike Arnold, who, who you guys talked with last night? Mike has a degree in architecture in the construction end of it. Mike has done over the last few years, worked with school districts. And we would ask, ask the district to, you know, there's different ways to do it. We've had districts go to like the tech ed program and have kids that are interested in coming and maybe do it once a month or once a, once a, a quarter to come in. And we would do an educational program with them. We would show them and walk them through what we're doing on the project. Folks, if you know the industry, college is great. I went to college, graduated at Penn State. My degree is in business, been doing this for thirty-five years. But I'm gonna tell you right now, if you, don't, don't hate me if you're not Penn State, man, I'm sorry. I saw you right away talking. Now, there you go. We are. But, you know, if, if you, if you talk to people right now, you cannot get enough people on the trades. You young boys, are you, you all in school right now? You all in high school? I'm gonna tell you right now, you need to strongly consider getting into trades. You can make a lot of money in the trades and you can come out of the trades, come out of that education and guess what? Your debt is not gonna be like a four-year degree. And if that four-year degree in college end of it is what you're, what you wanna do, hats off to you, man. Pursue your career, pursue your wishes. All right? But I'm telling you right now, the way this world is set up right now and the way business is, the trades are at an absolute must and need. All right? We do a lot of work in the career technology schools and they are, I mean, they have employers coming to them saying, you have kids in HVAC, you have kids coming out in plumbing. We want them. So what Mike does in these programs is he sits down and he'll show you, he'll show you the ductwork. He'll show you, look, if you wanna get into designing this, then you wanna get into mechanic engineering. If you wanna be the one that's, you know, construct this, we'll show you, we'll show you how to do this stuff. And we'll try to help and hook you up to get into this. You know why? Because we need you in the industry. You know, we did a project in Mount Pleasant School District, West Monmouth County. We put in the contract that the contractor had to have no less than four masonry's on the job. They never had over three, they couldn't get them. We helped try to get them, we went to the union halls, everything, they could not get them. So I'm just telling you, there's a, there's a need out there for that. And if you guys, if we, if we're fortunate enough to work with the school district on that, get involved in that program. All right? Belly up to Mike, talk with Mike, Mike's got a lot of connections with that, he may be able to help you down the road. Okay? Um, that just gets me to the questions end of it. Again, I know it was a lot of information. Uh, you folks last night were drinking water out of a fire hose, I understand it. But, uh, great dialogue, you guys were engaged in it. Um, I think whichever route you're gonna go on this thing, you're gonna have a good project because your, your heart and interest is truly, truly in what you're trying to do. So hats off. I thank you very much. And before I do leave, I wanna wish everybody happy Thanksgiving, enjoy spending with family, friends and just have some great time off. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Um, I gotta tell you, Bob Coleman, Jonathan, the, all the administrators, they've done a great job with this. I mean, we as a board had the vital decision to make, I know that, but I don't know what that, the school needs. We started out wanting to do the project in both buildings, but we can't fiscally do it. So we thought, instead of doing, and, and Bob, please, if you're not in agreeance, please say so. We started out saying, let's do one right, get it paid for and then do the second one right, instead of having to do each one. And we felt that was the best way to go. From Bob, right? Jonathan's happy because we picked the elementary, of course. And, um, we, this wasn't a one-month process. This project started before we got on the board, they were dealing with people. Am I right, Bob? And there was another company involved. Um, the Site Logic was recommended to come in as a second company. Um, I left it up to Bob, I said, Bob, what's your opinion? Bob, you wanna come up and give the opinion? You don't? What's your opinion?
I think they're doing a good job.
You're happy with?
Yeah, I think the grant process, not putting the horse in front of the cart, all the grant process right through, let the grant process lead the construction project, the funding there for it.
Right. And, and they're, they, they did the timeline of the grant and everything right down the line. And, uh, I wanna thank them and I wanna thank the administration, Bob, Andy and everything they did to put it together. And, uh, does anybody have any questions on it? Uh, we are not voting on this tonight. We wanted the public to get a chance to see exactly what we were presented over the past few months in the finalized presentation. Does anybody have any other questions on it? Okay?
Thanks, everybody, take care. Thank you. Thanks for your patience. I'm glad I have to sing. You're allowed to have a second. Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a presentation about the Voeg students.
Clarion Limestone Board Administration, faculty, parents, friends. My name's Gary Cale. I have been very privileged to be a member of the instructional body of this school district. You have a great group of educators here, not teachers, educators. They care not only about the instruction that they give their students, but they care about the students themselves. And the only reason I bring this up is because this is testimony to what the investment that these people up here made in our program. We needed new welding. We came to them and they supported us. The result of that situation is as follows. We went to the first FFA regional competition we've had in two years. Took a group with us. We took eleven boys, no, let me rephrase that, we took eleven young men to that competition. When we got there, we had our opening, and we moved across the streets to the area where we're going to do our testing. Now, the testing for this competition for us had to do with welding, it had to do with being able to read a transit, to be able to do elevations, had to do with blockwork calculators to build a foundation, and it also had a written test that was on basically everything, plumbing, electrical, you name it, it was on there. I walked to the back of the bus, and Riley Millar, who's one of those groups, looked at me and said, Mr. K, are you going to give us a pep talk? I said, no, I'm not going to do that. I said, I'm going to tell you two things. Said, number one, I want you to walk in there as humbly as you possibly can. And number two, I want you to go and do the job, because it will speak for itself. When it does so, there were thirty people who competed in this, seven different schools. I have to warn you, I'm very passionate about what I do, and I knew, I knew I was going to have trouble with this. Well, what happened was this. Of the top twelve positions, our students took eleven. Eleven of the top twelve positions. I could not get all of them here this evening. I could not get all of them here this evening because contrary to popular belief, these young men do work. Okay? I'm very, very proud of them. Two of those eleven were first-year students who had never participated in anything like this before, and yet both of them placed in the top twelve. So again, I want to thank you for the investment in our program, and I assure you, it's the best, and it will continue to be that way because of the heart that this school district has. Thank you.
Okay, next we have the Top Five Student Awards. And before we get into that directly, I want to take an opportunity to thank Larry Jamison and Kathy Henry, two of our board members. This is their last meeting, I wanted to thank them for their time, their commitment, their service. And I also want to see if you guys would be interested in reading the names and giving out the top fives. From seventh grade, and this was for last year right now, for last year, seventh graders, Audrey Aaron, Mariah Allison, Addison Jackson, Hope Kemmer, and Riley Morris.
This is for our eighth graders, Adeline Gert, Madison Greeley, Casey Love, Logan Meyer,
Ninth graders, Madison Aaron, Ella Aaron, Abigail Foster, Lily Mail, Ava Orchid, Riley
Okay, now our tenth graders, Kendall Dunn, Jocelyn Henry, Riley Klingensmith, Carly
And finally, our juniors from last year, Michael Aaron, Brady Folks, Abigail Hines, Thank you, students, for all your hard work, and thank you, teachers, for helping me get At this point in time, if you'd rather not stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to leave, and we'll take a little break. Okay, getting back to our agenda for all those of you who are interested. All right, I can do that, right? Okay. There are no budget transfers, so there is no item seven. Last time I think we did this, I thought I'd just speed things along because there's not typically a lot of discussion on this, but if you want to talk about any of these items, let me know. Six through eleven are the approvals of the reports that were provided. If you would take a minute and let me know, does anyone want to talk about any one of these particular reports, do we have a problem with us lumping them all together? Any objection from anybody?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve items six, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? I think Gary heard him first. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Any abstentions? No abstentions. Motion passed. Okay, Communications Intermediate Unit. Is that? Wait, hold on. Say that again, everybody?
No report, please, no.
Wonderful. Thank you. And Clarion County, or Clarion Career Center representative, that's Joe.
In the last month, we've had an open house at the Career Center. It was well-attended, actually better attended than we thought it would be. So we're looking forward to having more students come in through the schools as the year goes on to see about having, who might be interested in coming to the Career Center. That's all I have.
Thank you. Legislative Representative Gary.
Yes, I have three things. The first thing is, PSBA sent a letter to the Senate opposing House Bill sixteen sixty. And sixteen sixty would limit the temporary emergency provisions from the current period of up to four years to sixty days, and that is, would be taking our authority away as school boards. And when an emergency results in five consecutive days of being unable to provide in-person instruction. So there's been a letter sent to the Senate. Also, one other thing here, if I can find it again, seizure training. House Bill four sixteen provides that school nurses and other professional employees may complete online or in-person seizure management training approved by the Department of Health beginning in twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three school year, in consultation with the Department of Ed. Must identify and approve an online course instruction in the training in seizure management. And this also does, does not obligate to administer medication or provide medical care, just because they've had this training. And the last thing, they came about late afternoon yesterday, the Commonwealth Court has voided the mask mandates as of December fourth. They are avoided, and it's over.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. CLAEA representative, do you have a report?
Of course I do. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for including us, and thank you to Mrs. Henry and Mr. Jamison for your time spent and your hours invested. We appreciate your efforts. Next month, we'll be welcoming some new members to the board. Our members have been doing our best to educate our students, to keep ourselves healthy, to keep our students healthy, but at times inevitably absences happen, and that has created a great need for substitute coverage. And even though our list continues to grow with people volunteering to join our search for subs, sometimes their substitutes just aren't always there. So members have asked to share that that adds to their stress and the extra work caused by removing classroom teachers from their regular class to then go substitute in a different classroom. We just encourage creative problem solving, we're happy to help work through those possible solutions, and looking at maybe extra time as compensation, or even financial compensation for the additional duties that we've been fulfilling. Also, I know the school board has adopted a curriculum committee, and we think that's an excellent place for students and teachers to have a voice. Since last January, our association has been repeatedly requesting conversation and teamwork with district leadership and leadership of the Board of Directors. We've never been afforded an opportunity, so we think that Curriculum Development Committee would be a great place for us to start. So thanks for considering that.
Thank you for the report. To give full disclosure, the fact that there's pending grievances also affects the ability for us to meet and talk when there's pending grievances from the union. So we look forward to having those resolved, and then we can get open communication going again. Building Finance Committee, Dave, do you have anything to add beyond what?
No, just want to thank the board for coming out to all the meetings and the administration, and I thank staff, she got the finance people there, and I think it's going to be a great future for our school.
Transportation Committee, Amy.
Yes, I want to clarify the process of what we mean by one-tier busing. Right now, we're considered two-tier busing, not because necessarily of our two runs, but we do have two bus runs, but we have two buildings as well, and they're on different schedules. So when I talk about a tier-one busing, I'm talking about a tier-one schedule for the district where the both schools are running no more than ten minutes apart from what they currently, from each other. There is a lot of positives about that, and I won't go into that, but number one positive is being able to meet as a staff in this room whenever we need to, even any day of the week. Right now, we are only together as a staff on in-service days. So the one-tier busing, and Chris Wolf and I have been working, and she's been talking to the transportation, or to the contractors, one of the things that you'll see, parents, is there won't necessarily be a huge change for you. Some elementary will ride with high school, but there will still be like little mini-runs and new runs created so that we can afford ourselves to be one-tier, one district. We talk about the schools, the road out here separating our schools. In discovery of all of this, the time that we don't have together is also separating us. So we need to have that be one. So you will be hearing more about that, we'll be having a Transportation Committee soon, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Amy. Moving on to committee reports, student board representatives, do you have reports for
Thank you, Mr. Parker. The seniors had a good first quarter, and many of them were on honor roll or high honor roll. There will be upcoming band and choir concerts in December, and you can check the school calendar for details about that. Also, in order to serve as positive role models, the seniors took their second period Also, in order to serve as positive role models, the seniors took their second period time last Wednesday to assist the seventh and eighth graders through an obstacle course. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Everyone is working hard and we're ready for our Thanksgiving break starting November twenty-fourth, which is a half-day. All fall sports are over with and each sport had a great season. We have two first-team all-conference players, seven second-team all-conference players, and one third-team all-conference player. Youth Council had their first junk retreat, which was a success. And tomorrow, Youth Council is doing their first blow bubbles, not smoke. Thank you.
Thank you both, and I wanted to take a second and say something here to you, Ms. Schaefer. And you both did a wonderful job. But Ms. Schaefer, I just wanted to tell you that I think you do a wonderful job, and I think that you're an example for us. On the last two or three times where you have raised issues where there's a concern or potential disagreement, you've done so in a professional and polite manner, not accusatory, not hostile, and I really respect that. I don't think we should take that for granted. I think that's a great thing that you do. I encourage you to keep bringing us those things and keep doing it the way that you do because I think a lot of us grownups lose sight of that and we tend to want to go to war on everybody and fight about everything too fast. And if we learn to act like you and just talk about it, I, I think we'd all be going in the right direction. So I really wanted to commend you. I think you're doing a great job and I suggest you keep doing it. You'll go far, so.
Nathaniel, can I add? Last board meeting, the young lady commanding, somebody asked her, how's school going? Oh, it's great. She was so excited, and that brought excitement to me as a board member instead of sitting here saying, uh, what are we going to go through tonight? She brought the brightness to the room, last board meeting. And I didn't get a chance to say that, and I want to thank you for it.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Moving to Richard, Information Systems Director.
Hello? The MLS department, combined with the efforts of myself, Megan Staub, and Michael Bertoni, have resolved forty tickets in our ticketing system last, for last month. For teachers, administrators, as well as questions have been answered via email for students, teachers, and parents. We have continued work under the supervision of Megan Staub on visual updates as well as consistent updates to new news and information for the users of our website to get up-to-date information. We, we have worked closely with the guidance department. So teachers of quarter-one grades were out to students in a smooth process with no major concerns or issues, and the grades are delivered on time. Michael Bertoni has been working with every elementary classroom to incorporate technology in each of the teachers' classrooms, as well as helping out to answer any questions and tips to teachers to help them directly inside their own classrooms. Is that it?
Thank you. Any questions for Richard?
Good job.
Okay, moving on to Business Manager Report. Stephanie. Make the move. Okay, the request. Okay, Stephanie's violating the microphone rule, but she's telling me that she's got a presentation that she's going to give us, so I think we probably should, so the people at home can see it, put it on the screen, because otherwise they're not going to see it, right, Richard?
You want to put it on the screen?
Is there any other way for the public to see it?
Probably not.
Then screen it is.
Okay, I got my microphone now, Nathaniel. I'll make this pretty short and sweet. The district has been in the middle of their local normal yearly audit. I do have a little note there that the audit is not final. Because of grant funding, we do need to go through a single audit this year. So we're still in the middle of our single audit part of the audit, so. I don't expect any material adjustments, but I just want to put that disclosure out there that they're still reviewing our grants and there could be an adjustment. As you can see, hopefully you can see, our budgeted for 2021, and it's very difficult to see. Kind of cuts it off. We were projecting a loss of a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars when we did our estimated budget. With the actual, because of grant funding, we did come in at one point four million. As everybody knows, last year, due to the pandemic, it was a, you know, a year that was like no other. It was something we weren't anticipating, but the school district was able to expend funds that were permitted by the grants, and that did allow us to have a one point four million dollar profit. Just kind of re- to review the revenue side of things, the school district has local, state, and federal funding. For the local, we had a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars more than we projected in our budget. Just to bring up some points that created that, one was our tax collection rate. In nineteen-twenty, the collection rate was ninety-two percent, and we did see a ninety-three percent collection rate for the year 2021. So it actually was for the better, the school district. We also had the judicial sale of the seventy-six truck stop, and it was a estimated profit of fifty thousand dollars. That was something we weren't anticipating, but we're very happy with the district that that sold and can be potential revenue that we haven't had in prior years. Earned income taxes, when we did our estimate, we weren't really sure what was going to happen with the pandemic and how that was going to affect our earned income tax revenue. I can be happy to say that we actually had better collection than we en- that we estimated. It was thirty-three thousand dollars more than what we actually anticipated. For our state funding, it actually went down a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. And the material reasons for that, there are subsidies for tuitions for orphaned and child's. That is just an estimate, I have no control over that. It just depends what students that we have in the district at the time. So that decreased by twenty-five thousand dollars in the actual amount. For special ed, the state has us calculate the cost of each special ed student and put it into a certain category, and those categories determine how much special ed funding that we get each year. The estimate was actually twenty-three thousand dollars less than we actually got. Pupil transportation subsidy, we probably would have been right in line with what we estimated in the budget, but all school districts were notified that they could possibly have a decrease due to changes in the market value in excess of cost calculation. CL was one of those, and we lost around, I don't think I had it in there. I thought it was around twenty thousand dollars that we had lost. That was not something that we could control. It was a change in the calculation and the received amount was less than projected. This is kind of cut off, so I'm sorry, but the federal grants, you can see, increased one point seven million. And that list there that you can't see the whole entire amount, all the grants that we received in 2021 fiscal year that we used permitted expenses for was one point seven million dollars. So it was pretty much awash with the federal grants that we received, and that's why the increase. For our expenses, overall, we were a hundred and thirty-nine thousand over. I just want to bring to your attention, professional services, you can see, is a decrease of three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, almost three hundred and thirty-five thousand. We actually had decreases in our SRO. We used to contract the SRO, and now we employ Mark Graff, who's doing a very good job. We have decreased IU cost and professional development. I also wanted to bring to your attention, oops, I said that was, professional service actually decreased by a hundred and thirty-six thousand, sorry, I misstated. And supplies increased almost three hundred and thirty-five thousand, which those supplies were mainly due to, or were due to, the pandemic and the safety measures that we had to take with cleaning and different items that we had to purchase. So that was the increase. So overall, I just wanted to show the governmental fund balance for the general fund. It's six million dollars. The capital projects fund is three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And tonight, the board will discuss to commit the four point five million dollars. So if anybody has any questions, I'll take your questions. The IU was part of that, some of the IU costs went down.
Yeah, salary, salaries and wages went up, correct? Let's just mic him out over here. Salary and wages actually went up sixteen-three, almost over what we budgeted, is that correct?
I'll move him back to that page. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I did want to say, I should have said this beginning, the board actually received a more detailed breakdown of the budget. So if you guys have any additional questions, you can let me know. But this was an overview for the public and for the board. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up is the Admin Team, Superintendent Admin Team report. Amy, you want to lay that off?
I can do that. I want to say that Cecilia, you have always been very special to me. And Emily, you have learned or taught, I'm sorry, you've taught Cecilia to be like she is as well. I know that you've mentored her very well, and Cecilia's come a long way. And part of that is due to Emily being a help to you with the program. And so you will need to do that next year then to our junior that will be appointed. I would like to thank the IT Department again, along with Mr. Stanfes, Stacy Wiles, and Tammy Wagner, because the report cards were so smooth. Couldn't never have been done without all of that hard work. I would also like to mention that we've talked about safety in our school and what we're going to do at the elementary school, and I do want to let the board know that we have secured a program, the Identikit Badge, that everyone that comes into the school building has to be checked in, and it tells if there's any concerns there. And I would like to, Mr. Graff actually and I talked today, and we would like to show you that process. Next board meeting, like at six fifteen, come over to the high school and show you how that works. Because we're proud of that, and it's a step in the right direction for our safety measures here at the school. And I'd also like to mention that Dave Egleton has been a huge, huge component, part of the success of getting to this part with our building. And he's humble about it because he's thanked everyone else, but I, as the superintendent, need to thank him in public because without him leading the way and pushing along and having us do the things that he had us do, we wouldn't be here. So I do appreciate that, and I'm excited, I'm so excited for this to happen. I would also like to recognize Mr. Jameson as our stand-in board member for about eight months, I would say. Larry, gosh, it went really fast. And we will miss you, but we appreciate all that you have given us and contributed to this board and to this district, and we appreciate the time that you took, non-paid, to be a part of our team. And Kathy, she has been here four years with our board and with our school district. She is a phenomenal person. If you know, if you don't know her, the best word I can use for her is genuine. What comes out of her mouth is what, is what she's thinking. She is very supportive. She has been an activist for students in our district, and I will deeply miss her. However, she's a film hallway, and I hope to see her out in the audience after this board meeting, and I thank her for all of her dedication to our district. And finally, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. We're all looking forward to that. Mr. Aaron, do you have a report?
I just want to mention to the board, I know the, the people that were here for the Curriculum Committee got to hear some of the things that we're talking about, and even when there was discussions about discipline in the school, I just want to let you know, at the high school, we implemented one of our components, the PBIS system, and, and even the, the two teachers that were involved with it kind of were leery and didn't know if it was going to work. And they've been amazed by, we, we did a, a thing with seventh, eighth graders, and I'll tell you what, the, the seventh, eighth graders have done an exceptional job of, of meeting the goals that we set for them. The basics of what we set up for them was, with the scheduling, I do have the gym open during their lunch. So once they finish their lunch, they had three goals to improve their moving around, not to move around as much, and to control their volume and to clean up their spaces better. And basically, everyone that does that, there's an opportunity for one of twenty tickets, and those kids who get the twenty tickets for meeting those three goals, they get to go up to the gym and just, just play for fifteen minutes, and it's been great. There's, there's groups of kids that have not got along before, and they'll go up there and they'll play a basketball game together. And so I just want you to know, the students, as usual, make this place one of the greatest places to be, and the seventh, eighth graders are really, really pushing it to, to help improve, so.
Good evening, I have two items that I wanted to share. And since Mel shared about his PBIS success, I also then have a third one to share regarding our kindergarten, our kindergarten classes. We are using our kindergarten classes. We are using PBIS Tier Two intervention with a group of about half a dozen students. They're all making tremendous progress, and we're going on a good week and a half now of improved behavior from that group. So that was created by the kindergarten team and Dr. Alex Gray, our school psychologist. So the first thing that I'm excited about is we have an in-service day coming up on November 30th. And some of the items that we are going to be trained on is trauma with our own Diana Dietrich, threat assessment, online training through Safe Schools. And then Brandon Maines from IU Six is going to be doing specialized law. And our very own tech team of Megan Staub and Richard Comston are going to be doing Fids Day training. So we're excited about those things. And finally, I have a statement here from our incredible, awesome elementary librarian, Pete Baskett. Mr. Baskett wanted me to read this to you. He said, "We had the most successful book fair last month in our recorded era of CL history. We shattered all financial books purchased and cash register records. Our school will benefit immensely as a result of the generosity displayed by our students, their families, loved ones, friends, and faculty and staff of the whole Claring Limestone area community. Thank you for your support. Sincerely, Mr. Pete Baskett." And that's all I have this evening.
Nothing to report. I just want to follow up on the report items referencing PBIS. We had talked about that as a component or in relation to our handbook, and trying to get a correlation between PBIS, the handbook, and have everything clearly communicated for our staff members, our students, and everybody. I understand that's something that the admin team is still working on, correct? Okay. So that's one, my understanding is they'll be bringing us a recommendation. I don't know, maybe I'm getting, I think it's the cart before the horse, not the horse before the cart, but it might be a rewrite of the handbook, I don't know, but the whole idea to me is one of our key issues is communication, and we need everybody to understand what the expectations are and the discipline standards. And that's what we're, we understand there's a need, we've heard their concerns, and the admin team is working on it, so we appreciate everyone's patience in allowing them the opportunity to develop that. It's not something they can turn out in a night, so patience is needed, but they will be getting back to us on that. So if you're wondering what the PBIS is and what that means going forward, there will be more information on that coming. Executive session announcement? There was none? Item five, public comment. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment? Mrs. Johnston, no?
I will just say that last night, Dave had invited me to come.
I can't let you talk over there. It's a microphone violation.
I told you he has a microphone, Nazi.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for last night's presentation. I know, I, like Mr. Quinn, who his first meeting with us was, I'm old school, and I am old school also. So I'm thinking, do we need a new gym? We've done this gym for however long, and I can continue doing that. But I have to say, I went home last night very impressed, very excited about the possibility of what you are planning and doing in this district. And Dave and I spoke after the meeting, and we said, "We may not be here years from now to enjoy the fruits of this new gym like many of you will be, but we are proud of it. I like what you're doing. I think you have gone above and beyond, not just the building committee people, but all of you." And so thank you again for your service as board members. January is always School Board Appreciation Month, but I want to take this opportunity to thank all of you and our exiting individuals and welcoming our new ones as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to add public comment? Kathy Henry, I believe, would like to say something, via a microphone. Excellent, you ready?
Yes, I got it. I just wanted to like share a few things with you guys tonight. So hopefully I can get through this, so bear with me for a second. Board members, administration, teachers, students, and community members, thank you for the opportunity given to me to serve on this board. This was an opportunity for me to take on a challenge to support students, teachers, administration, the community, and most importantly, my school too. The past four years, a lot was accomplished, but there's still plenty of work to be done, as we have seen. But while I was on the board, there's some things I think that you should know that I was actively involved in. The management team. The management team met, and we delegated work responsibilities and did some team bonding to provide a cohesive administrative team. This was the group that actually sat down together and we revised the chain of command, and that's currently in the student handbook and on the website. Building and finance, working through the budget, evaluating the financial stability of the district, discussing plans, like how we can make changes in the district for the structures, for the betterment of the students as a greater good. The pandemic task force, this is where I was involved with Amy and other individuals, where we discussed real statistics, gathered information from other facilities and possible processes that we could use during COVID-19. The sanitation conversations, the supplies needed for that, and you know how those supplies would be purchased, et cetera. And then the curriculum committee. We just started this program or this committee, and so we're going to look at the school to see where we need to make some changes, you know, where are we wasting any time, where can we benefit in improving our class or core curriculum? And then last but not least, telemedicine, which I was asked if I would help facilitate the workings of this. This would happen here within the buildings, and we work with local schools to help improve the health and safety of the students. So being on the board for four years, I can say that it's never always easy. There are many discussions, challenges, disagreements, frustrations, and compromises, and a lot of tough decisions, all which were made for the good intentions of the students, which is where I hope that this board continues to go. So I may not be on the board, but I'm a community member, and I will always stand strong in support of the highest education possible for the students in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, that will conclude public comment. There is no old business, new business. Item A, consideration for retroactive approval to advertise November 5, 2021, for its secret request for proposals for an investment-grade audit services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And the motion for Dave with a second from Gary. Any discussion from the board? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? All opposed, no? Any abstentions? Motion passed. Dave, I'm going to ask you a question. On item B, the way it appears in the agenda is the way Psych Logic gave it to us.
That's the way our solicitor gave it to us? That's how it had to be advertised, for us to be able to have a presentation last night and tonight?
So you're talking A or B?
B.
So is the motion left blank then, or do we put Psych Logic in?
No, we can put Psych Logic. They're the only ones that that sent a letter of, that wanted to be part of it, I believe. Am I right on that, Donna? It's the only request we got, so we can fill that in with Psych Logic.
Okay. Okay, so item B is consideration for approval to award Psych Logic based upon requests for proposals for investment-grade audit services advertised November 5, 8, and 15, and which was received on November 15. Do I have a motion to approve? I think I heard Kathy and then Joe with a second. Any further discussion from the board?
All this is the one saying that they can present what they presented last night and tonight. That is not voting to go with the project.
That relates to the guaranteed energy savings.
Guaranteed energy savings, part of it, right.
Right, okay. Any other discussion or questions from the board? Okay, Donna, this is a roll call vote.
Joe Belai?
Yes.
Corey Ditch?
Yes.
Dave Egleton?
Yes.
Kathy Henry?
Yes.
Brian Huar?
Yes.
Larry Jamison?
Yes.
Michael Parker?
Yes.
Gary Spoh?
Yes.
Rebecca Allison?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item C, consideration for approval to publicly advertise on November 18, the intent to consider the award of a guaranteed energy savings project in an amount not to exceed $7 million with Psych Logic at the December 6, 2021 School Board Reorganization Voting Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Joe, second from Gary, thank you. Any discussion or question from the board?
This number had to be put in before last night's presentation to meet the 24-hour deadline.
The new sunshine law.
Exactly, yeah, for the sunshine law. As you, this is for the energy savings part only. As you see in the presentation, with no changes, that number would be closer to the 5.9 to $6 million number.
Okay, everyone clear on that? Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Corey Ditch?
Yes.
Dave Egleton?
Yes.
Kathy Henry?
Yes.
Brian Huar?
Yes.
Larry Jamison?
Yes.
Michael Parker?
Yes.
Gary Spoh?
Yes.
Rebecca Allison?
Yes.
Joe Belai?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, item D, consideration for approval of the following day-to-day substitutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Kathy with a motion, Joe with a second, thank you. Any discussion from the board? Roll call vote, please.
Dave Egleton?
Yes.
Kathy Henry?
Yes.
Brian Huar?
Yes.
Larry Jamison?
Yes.
Michael Parker?
Yes.
Gary Spoh?
Yes.
Rebecca Allison?
Yes.
Joe Belai?
Yes.
Corey Ditch?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item E, consideration for approval of a correction to the following 21, 22 supplemental contracts. It was for PJ Ren, Assistant Boise varsity basketball coach. We apparently had the incorrect dollar amount on the prior motion, so this is something we've approved before, but we're correcting the dollar amount. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'm making a motion.
I think I heard Gary with a motion, and is that Kathy with a second? Thank you. Any discussion from the board? Roll call vote, please.
Kathy Henry?
Yes.
Brian Huar?
Yes.
Larry Jamison?
Yes.
Michael Parker?
Yes.
Gary Spoh?
Yes.
Rebecca Allison?
Yes.
Joe Belai?
Yes.
Corey Ditch?
Yes.
Dave Egleton?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item F, consideration for approval of the following 21, 22 supplemental contracts. This is Athletic Director and Assistant Athletic Director. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Joe, I think, and second from Corey? Thank you. Any discussion or questions from the board? Roll call vote, please.
Brian Huar?
Yes.
Larry Jamison?
Yes.
Michael Parker?
Yes.
Gary Spoh?
Yes.
Rebecca Allison?
Yes.
Joe Belai?
Yes.
Corey Ditch?
Yes.
Dave Egleton?
Yes.
Kathy Henry?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item G, consideration for approval to purchase baseball uniforms for the 21, 22 baseball season at an approximate cost of Before I ask for a motion, I'm going to ask Amy just to bring us up to speed on the background for this, and Brian too, I don't know, you might have some information too to add. We'll get you in a second.
Just to cut to the chase, this kind of coincides with this wonderful evening, this great board meeting tonight, with our top students here. We're celebrating the ag department with what they've done. We're moving forward to help our students and our teachers to have a great environment to be taught in. And this is another good problem, could be, I'm looking at as a good problem, and I hope you do too, because we have a baseball team that is growing. And right now, they're anticipating 19 baseball players and four coaches, and right now, that would be 23 uniforms, and we have 16. To go along with that, it has also been a rotation for uniforms, and the baseball uniforms are due for rotation. They've been due, it's two years overdue. And so this seems to be the perfect opportunity to, for the board to support my decision to purchase these baseball uniforms. Along with that, I will add that there will be accountability for these uniforms as well, for the coach, from the ADs, that we get all 25, we are purchasing 25, returned. And that process, have it not been happening, will begin to happen again. Where I would like to talk about taking the money from is from, you know, we had a very skeleton budget this year, and we all knew that, and we knew there were going to be some things that came up. And our contingency fund has $106,000 in it, and we have purchased welders for almost $15,000, we heard Mr. Kale, and we have a total of $91,968 in that fund. We never know what's going to happen or come up, but I would like, and request that the board vote in favor of spending the $3,333.75 to purchase 25 baseball uniforms.
As I understand what you're saying, from budgeted funds? From the miscellaneous account? Right. Okay, is everyone clear on what they're, okay, do I have a motion to approve? A motion from Corey, I think Gary was second. Do I have any discussion or comment from the board?
The only thing I'd like to say is when we're buying things at the last minute, I'd like to see three bids to you, and I know you didn't get that, but we should have three bids to make sure, not just one bid. So I'm in favor if they need them, but we should have three bids. I mean, we all on the building committee see the difference two bids made, so.
Brian, do you have anything you want to throw in on this?
I'm supportive of what Amy's saying. It seems to be the cycle that those uniforms would be up to be replaced. And obviously, we want to keep a track of those uniforms and make sure there are enough, and you don't have to supplement those uniforms going forward, so. But as far as... Um, but as far as, what I understand, it's, they're needed and they're overdue, so, um, not too much to add other than that, though.
Okay, thank you, anybody else have any comment? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Larry Jamison?
Yes.
Michael Parker?
Yes.
Gary Spohl?
Yes.
Rebecca Allison?
Yes.
Joe Belai?
Yes.
Corey Ditch?
Yes.
Dave Ableton?
Yes.
Kathy Henry?
Yes.
Brian Huar?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, item H. Consideration for Approval of SAT Prep Course Instructor Supplemental Contracts for Holly Pence and Jen Simpson.
Second.
Motion from Kathy, sounded like Joe was the second. Any discussion or questions from the board? Roll call vote, please.
Michael Parker?
Yes.
Gary Spohl?
Yes.
Rebecca Allison?
Yes.
Joe Belai?
Yes.
Corey Ditch?
Yes.
Dave Ableton?
Yes.
Kathy Henry?
Yes.
Brian Huar?
Yes.
Larry Jamison?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item I. This is Retroactive Approval, Consideration for Approval of Rochelle Miller as a Game Manager Worker for the 21-22 School Year Retroactive to November 2nd. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion from Joe, second from Kathy. Any discussion or questions from the board? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Gary Spohl?
Yes.
Rebecca Allison?
Yes.
Joe Belai?
Yes.
Corey Ditch?
Yes.
Dave Ableton?
Yes.
Kathy Henry?
Yes.
Brian Huar?
Yes.
Larry Jamison?
Yes.
Michael Parker?
Yes. Motion passed. Okay, item J. Item J is something we have to discuss. That's how we're gonna do it. We're gonna do that before we have a motion, because we, uh, to explain this to everybody, the Policy 620 prescribes that we should have an uncommitted fund balance of anywhere from 8% to 11% of our budgeted expenditures. Did I get that right, Stephanie?
It's 8% to 11% of budgeted expenditures of that fiscal year.
Okay, so, that's where the 4.534 million that you see in the body of the motion, that's the total amount that needs to be committed to get us down to approximately 10%, correct, Stephanie? So, we're erring on the side of leaving more money uncommitted in the fund balance to stay with the policy, but we're committing the rest of it to, again, stay with the policy. The 4.534 includes the 3.074 you see below that. It's my understanding that we as a board, prior boards committed the funds that you see below, they comprise the 3.074 million. We as a board can reallocate, change that depending on our needs, our plans going forward. The idea would be to commit funds to expenditures that you anticipate coming up. That's, I understand the policy and the reason behind it is to, again, commit the funds to what the anticipated expenditures are going to be. And so, before we could vote on it, we need to have a, a proposed number. My understanding that this would be a proposal, I'll throw it out there, and then if there's other, uh, suggestions or alternatives, we could look at it. The proposal would be to make, put the elementary renovation project, or elementary project, to 2 million. The capital project to, this is a lot of numbers. I blame Dave for this.
Definitely right.
Uh, Dave and Stephanie talked before, and that's where this is coming from. Uh, so, elementary project, 2 million. The capital project, 1,523,967.80. I'll, I'll read numbers, ready? Capital project, technology, 200,000. And retirement, 810,690. And Stephanie's guaranteeing to me that those numbers add up to be, I wanted to make her nervous different, man. Actually, I can tell you that's not right. One of the two numbers is wrong, because it ends in 8 cents up top and 80 cents below.
That's you, Steph, you had the calculator. You already found my error when I did it by hand.
So, I'm gonna guess that capital at the bottom is, is, instead of 80 cents, it's 8 cents. Correct? That Russian number up top we need to change.
So, it's 8 cents or 80?
I think it's 80, I don't know. We're, we're deliberating. It's 8, 0, 8 cents. So, Dave, are you making that in the form of a motion?
Yes, um.
Did we put those numbers on there?
You did a good job reading them. I like to make a motion that we approve it this way, um, and I'll go into some explanation afterwards.
Okay, hang on, let me see, Stephanie said I left something out.
Okay, what did we do, Steph? You've got the calculator, I did it all by hand. You found my 6,000 error. When do you girls add the numbers up for us over there? Who's the math person over there?
My question would be, how does Common Core say we're supposed to add that number?
What's that?
How's Common Core say we're supposed to add that one?
Well, uh.
Round up, estimate, subtract. Divided by 12. Yeah, that's what we said.
Okay. Yeah, but the 6,000 was mine, I'll admit it. And so, you caught mine, now Nathaniel caught yours. Okay, I'd like to make it in the form of a motion to approve the, um, committed fund balance in the proper place.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion. I'm Mr. McDonald's universe here. Uh, motion from Dave, second from Gary. And McDonald and I are just comparing notes to make sure she has the same numbers written down that I said. Zero, zero. 200,000 technology. Yeah, 1,523,967.08. And 2 million in elementary, and that totals, that number at the bottom, the 4, 5, 3, 4, 0, 3, 6, 0, 8. Okay. Is anyone, now would be time for discussion and motion on the table, is there discussion? Comments, questions, other suggestions? Going once? Going twice? Roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Allison?
Yes.
Joe Belai?
Yes.
Corey Ditch?
Yes.
Dave Ableton?
Yes.
Kathy Henry?
Yes.
Brian Huar?
Yes.
Larry Jamison?
Yes.
Daniel Parker?
Yes.
Gary Spohl?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, we're down to my favorite part. K through P does not require roll call votes. So, my proposal would be to put those together and approve those with a voice vote, unless somebody has a particular item that they'd like to discuss, so take a few minutes here and let me know if there's something you'd like to pull out and discuss separately.
Yeah, I'd like to discuss the, uh, I, I just have some questions on L, about the new courses.
Okay. Does anyone else, let me ask it this way, does anyone else have any other motions that they want to talk about or have discussion on? Okay, my proposal would be, let's just lump them all together and then we'll have that discussion on L after we get a motion in a second. Do I have a motion to approve items K through P?
More votes.
Second.
Motion from Dave, second from Gary, I, real close to somebody else. Okay, so I have a motion and a second for K through P. And Gary, you wanted to have discussions, I'll give you the floor, go ahead.
Yeah, what, uh, for each of these courses, um, man, what, what grades is for the organic chemistry?
Organic chemistry being your 11th and 12th grade, that's gonna be an upper level, uh, pre-college class.
Biology?
The biology is, um, as we've talked, I know with curriculum, I can maybe we've talked, and maybe some of you haven't heard, there's five pathways, uh, for graduation through Act 158. Um, one of the pathways is if you have a student who passed, but in this way, the example for science, they pass biology, but they fail the Keystone Exam. If they pass the next subsequent class that is biology-related, then, then they would pass the Keystone and move on. We do not have a biology-based class right now, so this is actually going to provide a biology-based class to help students not have to constantly keep taking the Keystone Exam or risk, according to the, the way they say in the law, not being able to graduate because of the Keystones.
Who, who will be teaching our organic chemistry?
Um, Mr. Alden.
And are all these books part of that work?
Uh, the, one book is for the, that would be for the, um, biology course. There, food science, they're gonna make it more of a hands-on, kind of, uh, related to practical items, so that the students may make a better connection for it to, to pass the biology portion of the Keystones.
That's a nice layout. Uh, what's the readability of this book?
I forgot, you violated microphone rule.
What's the readability, do you know? Is?
Do you remember what the readability is on it? I think most of the time they have it right in the front corner, i- in the front of the book now, um.
It should be like a, it's a freshman to like, say sophomore level. Okay. Yeah, I like the layout of it. Do you want me to talk to Gary or?
If you want to talk, go ahead, go on, we'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, I'd like your insights.
Sure, yeah, so, the purpose that I wanted to talk about or discuss was something that was more of a hands-on learning activity. So, what the purpose of this one would be is, we were gonna try to do as a PBA this year for the next coming year. And Mrs. Angleton and I would co-teach the class. So, we were planning on instituting it during second period for the students that would not pass the Keystone Exam. Now, this was something that we thought about possibly instituting as a class for those students, instead of making it just a second period, but that would have to be something that would be discussed after a year of teaching. So, we wanted to kind of do it as a preliminary to see if we could co-teach the class first and then go from there. But they had a lot of, um, food science organized, and that's not one of those things you see more in the Food Network kind of thing. So, I wanted to kind of institute a little bit of that, because currently, we don't have any kind of home economics here. So, that was something I wanted to bring in as a possible elective class, possibly down the, down the line. So, again, that's just preliminary, kind of see how it works this next year and go from there.
Now, for the materials, since this is hands-on, do we have a lot of the materials, or is it gonna have to order a lot of materials to go with this purpose?
So, my next-year one would be, um, was trying to do it bare bones, skeletons, see what we can work with and go from there to see what we would need to collect or to budget for the following year. So, the workbook that goes with it actually has a lot of the hands-on learning stuff. There's a lot of like thermochemistry with it, because it's the food kind of developed, but there's also a little bit of your food safety with it as well. So, that would be something more along the lines of the biological end. So, we, Mrs. Angleton and I were gonna try to go, go at it together, possibly within this next year during in-service days, we'd kind of meet together, figure out how we were gonna organize it. We sort of already separated it out on our different chapters that we looked at. We found ones that were going to be more corresponding to the ones that she teaches in her class, and we wanted to kind of make it more of a curricular activity.
Thank you.
Sure, any other questions?
I hope that you're teaching the cooking part, that's all I got to say.
Uh, well, we're, we're.
Consider to hear your work.
We're, we're gonna figure out what we're gonna do there. But, uh, yeah, so.
Do, do you know if any other districts have uses?
I do not, actually, I found that online here, and I liked the way that was set up. So, I ordered it personally, so that's my copy and the workbook, all that's me, bought it myself. So, I looked through it, made sure that what we had looked okay, and the different vernacular or the different vocabulary in it was important enough that I thought, I discussed it with Mrs. Angleton, and her and I kind of made a, you know, co-decision on it, we thought that would be a good book to use.
Yeah, I, I like the, the look of it and the presentation.
It's, it's a new and upcoming one, plus it also comes with resource materials that I also ordered along with it. So, there's study guides, there's other ones that are also resources that come with that curriculum as well.
Mr. Alden, thank you, that sounds, um, like, um, good planning on the part of the administration, Mr. Stanfester, self, Mrs. Angleton. Sounds, sounds wonderful. Um, my question is, as we go to one more one-to-one in this paper, are these books online that can be?
They are not.
They're not?
So, that would have to be something that I could find, now, I, want me to look for that, I could possibly do that. I don't know if there was a program that led along with it as well, I can do that, so.
No, you like the book, I'm okay with that, maybe talk to the company and tell them you need it online.
Well, the, um, the resources that I did receive seem to be good, because they actually give you a good course layout on a week-by-week or semester-to-semester, with the course submission that I did with, um, from Mr. Aaron, it did, you could do it by semester, you could do it by year, you could do it by quarter, trimester, however, they broke it down into the chapters that should be accomplished by week to week. So, it was, it's a good layout, it was a good resource that I picked up.
Thank you.
Sure, nevermind. Anybody else, questions?
Thank you for your efforts, Mr. Alden, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Brian, do you have anything to add from a curriculum standpoint?
I think it's a great, great thing to offer organic chemistry with, uh, in the, some of the trades, engineering and, you know, doctors, uh, you know, pharmacists, all that kind of stuff, I think that that's a great offering. Um, you know, and, and biology was good too. Um, so, um, I think it's, it's a great thing that we're offering that and giving it introduction before somebody has to take it in college. And I hear that organic chemistry in college is, is pretty terrifying, so it's better to get your feet wet in high school, so.
I agree, thank you. Anyone else have any other questions or comments about L or K through P?
Uh, it's just a recommendation that, uh, for down the road, we are going to approve new books or a new course, it'd be nice, since we have a curriculum committee, that we're given a month, so the board that's on that committee can sit down and go through the books, look at them, especially like a new reading program, so we're not in the situation that we've been in with our reading program. And, uh, I would like to do that, I think that just gives us a better chance to go through them. And, uh, and I really, really, you know, are thankful for your expertise on these books, so I really appreciate that.
Anyone else?
Can I add on more, if I could?
Absolutely.
I mean, I, I did look over multiple different texts and look for food science with that one specifically, but the curriculum in the organic chemistry is actually the curriculum that I use for my organic in college as well. So, that one is a better language for a high school student to understand organic chemistry. And Mr. Jamison, I gave your daughter those ones, and hopefully that helps her a little bit, and she has kind of alluded to me, it was a good thing and that she, she helped her understand a little bit better. So, the language in that is better for anybody that may not have the language of organic chemistry to understand it better. And that was actually a very, um, inexpensive version, it's only about $15. So, I discussed with Mel, possibly the kids that take that class could actually keep their book if they would purchase it, so it'd be a cheaper one instead of doing the 150 or 200 dollars for, a lot of your science books are more expensive, so it was a less expensive version. And I would just adapt to that book for the kids to actually keep, so.
Do you know about how many students would, are interested in?
That again, Gary, I had no idea, I, I, I just put that out there, I enjoyed organics, so. so I would love to teach it, but again, that was something that I wanted to put out there, is one of those things that I wanted to do as soon as I started, but getting my curriculum developed in a way that I could then go for another one to teach was more prominent for me, once I felt more comfortable here, so. Thank you. Sure, thank you.
Okay, if there's no further comment or discussion, we'll do a, a voice vote, all in favor of K through P, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Any abstentions? Motion passed. Uh, before we adjourn, at the end, I always ask if anybody has anything else they want to discuss, we can't vote on anything, because it's sunshine rule, but is there anything else anybody wants to discuss?
Motion for adjournment?
Uh, not yet.
Oh, nobody's closed up.
Well, I get, just a second, I gotta make sure I do what Donna tells me, or else bad things happen. Uh, I need to remind everybody that there's a reorganizational meeting and voting meeting for any business that might come before the board on Monday, December sixth, twenty twenty-one, six thirty P.M., right here. Now, is there a motion for adjourn? Motion from Dave, is there a second? Second from Corey, I think that was? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Any abstentions? Motion passed, meeting adjourned.